Good evening all, we'll call our town council meeting here. Order at six oh four. Yeah, thank you everybody. And our invocation. Father, as always, we pray for your guidance as we make decisions on behalf of our town and community, those that we serve. We always look for your protection for all of our first responders, your non-foration officers, and all of those who serve us 24 hours a day here. Tonight, we have started our open forum, the look on. Self-serve. And if you look at here, it's, so it's Scott, the little Tony Witts, there with Matthew Soffe. We're gonna have him speak after our Healthy West Orange Healthy selfie proclamation. So we'll go ahead and have you guys up momentarily after that. And that is all left signed up for public comments. And so at this point, we turn it over for a special presentation, proclamation sent in order to Chief Ogden.
Happy to be here, everybody. It's been a pleasure tonight to actually get one of our citizens, it's Scott. Here, come on over. Get your order tonight with a chief special, which could make it last one. Let's be sincere for this one. So on May 12th, 2021, we'll have a copy of the mainstream consider. You observe an elderly man who appeared to be disoriented. You engage in conversation with him, only to learn that he was lost and unable to provide explanation to assist his return home. You then contacted dispatch to summon police assistance, and it went near police department shut up. When were police officers were able to ascertain the man was reported missing out of Latu County Court. Because of your actions, the family and friends are comforted knowing that their loved one was in good hands or returned home safely. Your quick actions to contact emergency services and your willingness to render aid and help in hand are be committed on this day under this award. Given this day, 10th day of August, 2021. I want to thank you for your service to town of Windermere. We've been willing to give a case individual who actually was missed and those were eager after that day for their evidence. So thank you very much, and thank you for the thanks to the police department as well. But tonight, I also get that special award, Longevity Service Award. Sergeant Jason Bock, keep coming up. I think most of our residents should know Sergeant Jason Bock has been with the Windermere Police Department for 10 years. He's a sergeant there, he acts as sergeant, he is part of our command staff. I would tell you, I've been here for eight years now. When I came aboard, did you guys know we had some very big challenges here? We were down to about six officers and we had the entire command staff. It was time for them to find some other positions. Sergeant Jason Bock was one of the individuals that I recognized very early on immediately. That he was certainly a leader in the Windermere Police Department, and he has done a now saving job. I will say that his effort and his work ethic is beyond anybody else that we have here. He is actually a main leader in our police department. We're looking forward to his future, and he is also part of our succession plan in our future as we move on. And those of us getting ready to retire, hopefully enjoy the sunset and beach or whatever it is we get to do. So we're happy, happy to hear his long day. So Jason, in recognition of your 10 years of dedicated, honorable service to citizens in the town of Windermere, such for the community and the Windermere Police Department, I'm gonna present you today with the Longevity Service Award. Day, this day of August 10th, 2021, congratulations, sir. Thank you, Cypher. So if you have a child who's going to Windermere, watch elementary school or come out of maybe Willow subdivision. You recognize this, thank you, Cypher, as one of our school crossing dogs. So today, she has been with us for five years, making sure that your students, your children get across the road safely and get to school safe. Not if it's raining, if it's sunny, if it's nice, or the weather's really bad, we appreciate her service there. You may recognize the name, her daughter is our administrative assistant board. That's in the back, so it's a true family affair at the Windermere Police Department. So that be a recognition of your five years of dedicated, honorable service to citizens of the town of Windermere, such for the community and the Windermere Police Department, I want to present you with the Longevity Service Award, and thank you for your service of the town of Windermere. Mayor, also Carlos is not here, so we'll just get that to the next round. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Next on our agenda is Healthy West Orange Healthy selfie proclamation. Go ahead, this is a short proclamation, so I'm gonna go ahead and read. And then if anyone like to come to the podium, we'll certainly have to. So this is the proclamation, whereas Healthy West Orange inspires healthy behaviors and provides resources to help residents make better lifestyle choices. And whereas Healthy West Orange champions healthy programs that deliver health and wellness activities. And whereas Healthy West Orange unites health-minded organizations for a healthy community provides meaningful benefits. And whereas Healthy West Orange advocates for healthy decisions that encourages local leaders to keep their communities' health and wellness a top priority. And whereas Healthy West Orange bears third Friday in September, a state annual West Orange Healthy selfie day. That's easier said than it might not be. Therefore, it is with great pleasure and progress, the mayor of town of Windermere, to declare Friday, September 17th, 2021, as West Orange Healthy Safety Self selfie day. And in celebration of the fifth anniversary of Healthy Selfie IR, all citizens join in supporting this initiative. And certainly, we appreciate all that you do at Healthy West Orange and all that you've done for our company. We've got some big upcoming changes in the brand pavilion network, we've broken one together with the voter. We appreciate all of your efforts. If you'd like to go ahead and speak freely.
Yes, so Mr. Mayor, just to let you know, he's also asked if after he finishes with his presentation, if all of the council members could come down, do a selfie with him.
Yes. Okay, I'm ready. I'm Steve Fielder, the senior creative designer of Healthy West Orange. And we're so excited to be able to be in the community and advocate for healthy choices. We're not here to take away your pizza or your nuts, just to make good choices and to enjoy a healthy lifestyle. So it's certainly a pleasure being able to be on social media. Check us out there with Healthy Selfie, there's a chance to win a one-year family membership to the Wayne State, and I think some other prizes as well. And the registration is open, we are gonna be holding a Healthy Selfie 5K at Horizon Best Hospital. And that is coming up next month. So and then during the whole month, you can do, sign up for Healthy Selfie 5K Norway, which is doing a 5K on anybody you want, a little bit at a time, all at once. And do, do they act within the West Orange community? Thank you. You want us to come down there?
No, let's have the slides in the background with the pitch on that council.
This is not your first time.
No. Suck it in, Billy. And hope one more time?
You can only do it so long.
All right, here we go, one more time, guys. Auburn.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And you're the small.
They're all small, Bill, that's why it's healthy too.
Thank you for having us. They give you one size, that's why we're gonna do this so much. Thank you. It's a blue shirt. They give you one size shirt. That's the game. Next up, we have. If council indulges me a bit on the agenda, I want to do two quick things. Number one, I want to thank Danielle Hendricks from the Windermere Server. She has been a great community partner, always here at all of our events, gets to know us all. She's gonna be doing some new things at University Center Florida, which I'm wishing you all the best. And one more indulgence. So Matthew Soffe is a great organization that provides services to homeless individuals in West Orange County. Great work. The town's been a supporter of theirs. The Police Department Foundation member, P D Foundation's been a supporter of theirs. And Shirley and Scott are here to give us just kind of a little brief discussion about what's kind of happening that you may or may not know about in West Orange County in terms of the comments, and how we can better help and partner up as communities.
Thank you very much, you guys. I got dressed up very well. Because basically, I spend a lot of time with homeless people, so there's not much time to be in suits and what have you. There was some mix-up as far as us being here and I appreciate the opportunity to speak for a few minutes. And I'll try to keep it brief, but come back another time and share more with you. But one of the things that we've been trying to do over the last, really, probably two years, is trying to get the community to work together as West Orange as opposed to one city having one plan and one city having another. It's basically what we've managed to do over the last several years, is to play musical chairs, if you will, with the homeless, never really addressing the situation at hand. Back in May of 2019, I floated a paper warning the community of West Orange to prepare for homeless tsunami. I use the word tsunami for two reasons. One is when tsunami hits, it does a lot of damage come in, but when it pulls out, it leaves all kind of wreckage behind. And what I was seeing due to development, things that were happening in housing market, job market for this area were happening. I was telling people back then that in three to five years, we would have enough homeless people on our streets to basically look like any other major city throughout the country that shouldn't be happening in a place like West Orange County. So my attitude through this was, if you don't care about homeless people, what do you want your community to look like? And so we've spent a lot of time over the last two years, I have probably in just the last three months, I've met 20 different elected officials from different communities in this area. And today was with Mike Ballhoffer with the city manager of Winter Garden, who's not elected official, but obviously charged with what, how to address the issue at here. My slides and stuff, probably I realize in the short time we have, aren't gonna make a lot of sense, but I'm gonna jump to a couple of things, because you could just go to the next slide for me. Basically, the question is, what are you seeing when you see a homeless person? This is typically what people see or think of when they think homeless. When I speak at Windermere Prep as I do every year, one of the things I do with the kids, I ask them a question to go to the next slide. I go to the next, I ask them a question, I said, do you think it's me or her who's homeless here in this picture? And usually, I put up a bunch of pictures of a bunch of people, because since both of us in that picture have been homeless. One is a little girl who never asked to do anything, never did anything to deserve living on the streets. The other one was a young man that had a single mother that ended up on the streets with her kids, and I didn't want to give them as adults, but somehow, by the grace of God, here I am. I say this also from the standpoint that I meet people every day that were very successful that are on our streets. We have this idea of the bone. When I ask the kids, who do they talk about? This is children talking to me, and they'll say unemployed, drug addicts, alcoholics, bones. I love that word when the kids share bones with me, because that's a learned behavior from their parents typically. They're just repeating what they said, because there's no reason for a kid to understand the difference between some of who's homeless and some of who's not. If you can, just keep jumping with me. I've got a lot of things I want to share, I can't, but I just want to go to a couple of things that you guys should know. Just keep flipping through those slides, and I'll tell you where to stop, just for one, because we're not gonna time for this stuff I'm gonna share with y'all. Here's what I want to share with you right now, Stephanie. This past year, 2020, we experienced a 300% increase in weekly visits in just this past, this last year. Since that time, we've not done the numbers lately, but I can tell you that in just the last six weeks, we have added another 130 homeless people. Currently, we're serving 1,000 homeless people that live here in West Orange County. You know, people are always saying they don't live in their backyards, so I'm here to tell you that they're in your backyard, you just don't know it. They're hiding in plain sight. Due to partly what we do to help them, but in partly is they're trying to keep a low profile, because all the development that we've seen in West Orange County over the last few years, especially through the COVID situation, 90% of the permits for building all Orange County took place here in West Orange County. And so all these people that have been living here in our backyards this whole entire time are now being pushed to our streets. As I drove up here this afternoon, just a few minutes ago, I actually saw one of my homeless guys on a bike going through. And what I tell people, the only difference between the homeless in Windermere and everybody else in West Orange County is there's just nicer trees. Because honestly, it's all the same, nicer trees, less resources, and not close to something. But that's all changing due to developments. You know, years ago, when I first came to West Orange County, it was 30, well, 30 years ago now, we didn't have all the things that we see now, the resources. We also didn't have the building. You have this little sleepy town called Windermere, you had another sleepy town called Winter Garden. I live in Oakland, which is no longer sleepy itself. And the whole area is becoming one large area of development. And with that, you notice on the news every night, we're seeing more and more about, we hear about a bear or coyote coming out of the woods. And we've been seeing that on the news, coming down our streets. Well, hold on for a few more minutes, and you're gonna see a homeless man or a child come out. What we're seeing right now is that we have literally, as I've said, we're at 1,000 people, we're serving now. I'll share this, this is a receipt just from today from our system. And what it tells me is that today, just in clothing and hygiene, nothing else that we do, we spent $6,319. That's one day of services. Okay, and I bring this to your attention, because this is something that's not gonna go away. And certainly, if the communities can come together and work together, there are ways to address it. More than ever, is we do have people like Phil Wilson, the Orange County Commissioner, who wants to work with the local cities and see what kind of funds we can find to address this issue. I'm gonna throw off a couple of things to you, because I set my little timer, it's told, things that I talked for 10 minutes, I want to make sure I stay within that. So if that thing buzzes on, we have a scenario. But right now, Matthews Hope's with help. Matthews Hope helps with medical, dental, optical, mental health care. We have 14 transitional homes, a Montessori preschool, a daycare. We have our own shop where we build custom furniture, refinished furniture, and repurposed furniture. And we have a store in our garden that you can buy set furniture, and it is employed homeless people to be able to do that, to put a roof over their heads. Basically, what we've done is we've developed our own economy. Anybody who wants to work at Matthews Hope can. And what we do is we let them work for points that are backed by real dollars. Think of the company Store, like the railroad yourself. You can have, you can earn a living, but you can only spend it on what we say you can spend it on. So you want to pay your child support, to come together with your child again, you can do that. You want to buy a car, you want to go college, you want to get a computer, anything you can think of that moves someone from point A to point B. Because Matthews Hope is here to move people towards a life of independence and self-sustainability. However, knowing that we can't always do that for whatever reason, then what we want to do is we want to hide the homeless in plain sight. And the way we do that is that on every Tuesday and Thursday, we run four bus routes currently. And we add to those routes weekly if you need to. And there's various stops at the homeless store that we're coming. And we will take them to Matthews Hope, we'll give a shower, a haircut, a manicure, we will do their laundry. Because the whole idea behind it is to hide them in plain sight. When you see them walking by, you don't know that they're homeless. There's nothing about them that says homeless. That means they'll be less likely to be harassed in the community and more likely to have a self-worth that goes above what's treated. The hardest thing to hear from people is a gentleman that has lived right down the street from here that had a $400,000 home and $150,000 salary a year and a half ago. And he had lost his job, there was financial issues, so he ended up divorcing his wife, or she divorced him. Things were going pretty bad, and he ended up losing his home. Three weeks before COVID hit, he got a new job, about the same money he was making before. And you can imagine what happened when COVID hit. It shut down again. And what Dan said to me a couple of weeks ago, he says, Scott, the hardest part about being homeless is not losing my job. It wasn't even losing my wife and family. It was the hardest part was the way people look at me now and the way they speak to me, as though I'm less than anything. He said, I'm still the guy who sat behind the executive desk two years ago that was employing people writing paychecks. He says, now I'm the guy that's living in his car, that I can't stay as clean as I used to be. And he said, that's the toughest part. So what do you do about that? So our goal, in closing here, is gonna be to try and work with our local communities to identify these folks and try to see what we can do to help movement towards that life of subsistence. But also ask the community to come alongside us, as other municipalities are. We're working with, I'll share with you right now, we have a medical office, we're opening a new medical, called Medical Home, that will operate as a clinic two days, it'll be Tuesdays and Thursdays, first come, first served. The other day, starting the week, one of our nurses, our doctor, or nurse practitioner will see them and then set them up with various appointments with various doctors we work with in our partnership with Health Central, Orlando Health and Advent Health. So we're doing a lot to address this stuff, and we're simply trying to bring awareness right now. And I'm asking you to take a look, Charlene, I have you brought from the publisher on the magazine. There you go. If anybody says they would like to look at that, should be glad to get stuff. It's my time, it's up, and I'll see you again.
Charlie, you were gonna say, you wanted to talk to our council as well in terms of the bike, and to come take a tour, right? We're gonna look at that a lot.
So according to purpose today, was to come out and give you a brief overview about what Matthews Hope does. I will be contacting your offices to invite you out for a tour of Matthews Hope, so this way you can see in real time what it is exactly that you do. So it will be on a Tuesday or Thursday morning approximately at 3:00. Keep upping yourself, okay? We're open to the public, so if anyone would like to come out and take that tour, please just contact, you all, just contact me. We can set that up, and we can come down and take a tour as well.
Thank you very, very much. And also, if you guys, you know, would get on the agenda and do a full opportunity to do some awareness and outreach, certainly that's happy. This is definitely something that, a situation that increases, the more startlings they are. And they're absolutely right, it doesn't matter if you live in a million dollar neighborhood or a thousand dollar neighborhood. If you see vacant land in Florida, watch the little pathways, promise you that there are individuals that'd like to learn more about what we can do and gather your partner, some of our other West Orange municipalities to make a difference and influence. Thank you all.
Thanks so much.
Council, we'll move on to new business. This is item A, this is the town council meeting, this is for July 13th, 2021, as well as the town council budget session meeting minutes for July 26th, 2021, as well as the town pilot workshop, besties stormlight 45% plan status till July 27th, 2021. And the town pilot workshop for firmly chart we assign August 2nd, 2021. Council, we can group all of these as one item under consented, and we're holding for a discussion, we need that up to you.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve all four.
Second. Second, councilperson, any further discussion, council? We'll begin, then councilperson.
Hi.
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 Thank you, council. Next up, item B, these are our financial items. Item I, it's our number one rather, it's our Motiveless Solutions Inc. This is for our Windermere Police Department grants. This is a JAG grant for radios. Chief, any comments?
Uh, sir, this, we've several JAG grants that are right, there's no ones we could ever see here this year who decided to upgrade our radios. Done a great job at, at that side of the place. Walked a few years ago, I should take a bunch of older radios that the Lake Police Department, they are water, they're live. Everybody's in matters, and we're gonna have a plan to break this up. This is gonna be a, uh, I'm sorry.
Sounds good. And Chief? Council, looking for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, so we'll give a motion to approve, councilperson Martini. And councilperson South, would you like to be your second?
Sure.
Any questions or comments, council, on the Windermere Police Department radio grant? All right, seeing that, we'll begin voting the councilperson votes. Hi.
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 Thank you, council. Item number two is sidewalk repairs. This is for precision sidewalk safety work, the amount of $26,400. Staff recommends improvement, do you have any comments on the site?
No, just to let you know that this is a greatly brilliant new product that they're using to fix these trip hazards. They did do an audit for us of these areas that we asked them to look at, came up with 400 areas in need of repair. One thing I do want to mention, though, it doesn't address that sidewalks would completely crush that construction activity, those will have to be poured by a concrete company. This is taking care of trip hazards throughout town, identifying the trip hazards. So we do have funding available for sidewalk and bypass. So we do have funding available for sidewalk bypass repairs, so we felt it was necessary to ask you guys to come and forward.
She does, did you say four hundred?
Four hundred eighty.
All right, so it's four hundred eighty times, uh, fifteen thousand for every one, every lawsuit that we receive on sidewalk cracks. So, um, counsel, look. Looks like a good thing being able to, uh, address. And then also, um, just as a comment, maybe it's something we can look at, or have one of the committees look at. In terms of when we are having all sidewalks damaged by construction, you know, maybe there's a way that we can make this a digital response. That I know some of this happens accidentally and that is what it is, but, you know, the amount of construction that we have, you know what happens, I see it too, so we can address that, uh, future thing.
Absolutely, and I think one of the things I'd like to ask is if, if any number of the communities sees somebody rolling over our sidewalks with heavy equipment, if they just snap a photograph, send it to me, we can go out and check, and if that sidewalk does need repairing, we can then go to the company and ask for some, um, some payback on that.
Thank you. Um, counsel, looking for a motion to approve, item two, sidewalk repairs, Precision Sidewalk Safety Corp. for twenty-six thousand four hundred eighty dollars.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, councilperson, wait, so for a second.
Second.
Second, councilperson South. Counsel, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, invoke the councilperson Martini. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yeah, it happens. I don't know, and I can't see. I apologize. Counsel, listen down.
No, just a quick question, Tommy, just to confirm that this, uh, about twenty-six thousand four hundred eighty covers all four hundred eighty, uh, repairs?
Yes, it does, and it's not too many exceed, it's not too exceeded. It can actually come in a little bit lower, but it won't exceed that.
Awesome, thank you. All right, very good question. We have a count, um, brush, I can draw.
That's the next project for my team. We've talked about that. We want them to well identify where those are. Because it's really difficult right now to get contractors to come out and do work, so I wanna make sure I have a full inventory of what we need, because then we might actually get them to come out and perform the work. So that's what we're gonna try to get a full inventory of those and, and vote that out.
Right, that sounds logical.
Here, one thing in addition to that, we are now enforcing our abandonment use permits. So that we know now when cable companies are coming in, and a lot of fiber optic companies are coming in, so we now have that on record. So it allows time to control that.
Thank you, John, appreciate that. All right, counsel, if there are no further questions or comments, we'll invoke the councilperson Martini.
Hi.
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 Motion carries, yes. Thank you, counsel. Other items for the consideration tonight, this is, uh, these are items C, our bestie base in stormwater improvement. Plan forty-five percent completion. This is a feedback to our conference station and workshop from a couple of weeks ago. Actually, it was a, it was a public information session, we planned over with, uh, all the residents were impacted. Um, all of the parts and pieces and unnecessary modifications to do that stormwater. The KHA is gonna present tonight, or is that gonna be John?
It's actually gonna be me, sorry. I'm trying to get to the exhibits. So we have, um, judiciously worked our plans, meeting with each of the residents, all investing in all of the areas affected by this design. I know you guys have exhibits that are part of your presentation, we're scrolling through some of them. Um, some of the comments that we've received back from the residents are clouded, so what we wanted to do is as we develop our forty-five percent plan, we want to cloud the areas that were part, parts of our conversations with the residents and taken into account. As an example, moving the spoil a little bit farther to, to the east. Um, as this example shows, Bill Marner saying yes, bringing it over, so we can say that to the tree. So we have been on it, we have spent a lot of time meeting with the residents, have a forty-five percent level. I think it's been a great plan that the town has instituted to allow us to get to a certain design level where we understand the hydraulic calculation and the effect of the grant, and allow us to make sure that we're providing the right treatment, while at the same time we're providing the residents input. So tonight, I think we're presenting a plan to you at forty-five percent that meets all the criteria for resident input, while at the same time solid, solid engineering. And so I think we're at a point now where we feel very confident that we can be forward without moving into the hundred percent construction document phase, so that's really what we're looking for.
Thank you, John, and, uh, I wanna point out a couple of things. I wanna thank everybody, especially Tommy and John, um, and some council members for spending a lot of time working together with the community, with the information, but they knew what's gonna be in front of their mouths, you know, the opportunity to make some tweaks. Um, you know, where we are today versus where it started, you know, you just saw the hard work and a lot of listening, so we're used with the, with the, the project. Has, um, come out of the place, so it's good. Also, having the documents in high-res, if someone can see them, I actually see them. Uh, we used to look at measurements and you just, they were just blurry, except for gas, is that twelve feet or is that a hundred and twenty feet? Uh, now that we come in high-res software, I'm just speaking with that, but little stuff like that does matter. Make good decisions, we appreciate all your effort on that. I know, uh, Tony's not here, you know, maybe pass that on, make sure that, appreciate that. All right, counsel, in front of you, then we have the, uh, forty-five percent plans for the bestie stormwater improvements. Uh, we're looking for a motion to approve, make a motion to approve, counsel person say.
Second.
Second, councilperson Martini. Counsel, any, uh, further comments or thoughts before we proceed?
Oh, I have a question. Uh, well, actually, I wanna thank John, Tommy. It's Stella, it's Stella and Brady here.
I, I mean, I really appreciate this.
Uh, thank you guys for your time. And the residents all also, and engineers, uh, Tal and Victor, for all your efforts to, to find middle ground, to improve all these problems individually. It's like, you know, like we talked about before, the intersection requires a custom solution. Guys, we're proud to, uh, to be where we are right now, so thank you for that. My question is, uh, once is time frame going forward to get to the hundred percent plan extension? Also, you know, how are we going in terms of, are you gonna create schedule?
So I'm gonna answer that question, but I do have Victor back there, because he's always gonna have to commit to whatever I say. Well, we can leave based on conversations with Tal and Victor, tell me whether or not this is true. Probably about two more months or at least issue in design, and then probably thirty to forty-five days for bidding. So we are okay, this design has to be done based on the grant by December, so we're within the context of the time frame of the grant. Um, and so hopefully by the end of the year, we'll have a contract, potentially getting a shovel in the ground, so.
But any potential, unless we get an extension?
No, I think we're good. We've already filed for one, which we got, and so we're trying to work within that extension, which I don't think we'll get in our
Once we complete design, we have twenty-four months to complete.
Project, sorry, yes.
We, we should be Tommy and Wallace, yeah, I'll just be quiet, let's say we're gonna shake.
And, um, it's been a blessing to be able to be a doctor with the rhythm, so, yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, any further comments or thoughts, questions? I think we beat it to death, and again, I mean, the good reason is we've got something much better than the good reason, so. All right, so if there's no further comments or questions, we'll be, we'll be, councilperson David, I'm Gilead South.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Bestie base in stormwater, plans at the forty-five percent level. Thank you all. Item number two, we have an update on the status of negotiations with the boat house tenants in action by the council, not so special item. Um, Heather, we're gonna start with you, and then we'll have, uh, councilperson Martini provide this update.
Then right after our council meeting, July, I got on the phone with councilmember Martini, talked about, um, some of the issues. And the air, I prepared a new draft, which included comments from the party from the boat house tenants. And I circulated that draft to councilmember Martini and to the boat house tenants. And I think, um, councilmember Martini's had a couple of conversations with Rich, and, so they're still working on it. And I think they have a call for scheduled on Friday to have another call on some of the open issues, but we're not quite, we're not there yet, but we're moving in the right direction.
Thank you very, very much. Um, so, councilperson Martini, I was gonna have you put in your comments, and then right afterwards, we'll discuss the potential to be to extend, right, uh, lease for a period of time while we complete items that you are all working on. Councilperson Martini.
Thank you, Mayor, and, uh, yes, uh, councilor Ramos, nice vote. About that. It's not the only place to extend a lease for a short period of time. Our goal at this point is to have everything squared away by September council meeting, so that we can put it to a vote. And, uh, I'd like to thank Mr. Poper for his, uh, participation. Tough position, uh, but he's doing a great job. We've made a lot of progress. We've, you know, got a good level of communication going. We're gonna do a final, uh, run-through of the lease on Friday, then tweak some of the details, nothing major, really. A couple of things that we looked at, or we, we have been looking at on this, uh, while working through this, that's the value of the access to the Butler chain place, obviously, uh, current options, investments in structure. We should, uh, look towards compensating them for that, and how, that discussed any numbers at this point, but, uh, that's, that's coming to the forefront. And also impartiality regarding other residents', uh, opportunities to lease a boat house in the future. We're keeping all that in mind. Um, obviously, we need to figure out, uh, an option. Were the options for permanent, maintaining town ownership of the boat house, that's what we're working towards, documentation. What that could be, but, uh, for councilor Ramos will fill us in on that when the time comes. As far as the, the maintenance and management of the structures, the boat houses were approved as local historic structures as recommended by the Historical Preservation Committee during the town council meeting in October ninth, two thousand and one. There was some, some, uh, confusion about whether they were actually considered historical structures. They are, they were voted on on page five, they were voted on initially. Discussing what they got back to, because, uh, there was a vote to add this to the historical, uh, providing historical status for them. And by doing so, that basically puts them under the umbrella of the historic preservation board as far as, uh, being in charge of the maintenance and that type of thing. And the board has already embraced that idea, and they're working towards a new specialist, so that all five boat houses can be maintained to the same level. That would not be put on any different occupants, it would be all the historic preservation board, and that would take some of the, uh, town staff, the works, announce, or what needs to, when it needs to, and to keep the records and documentation for that. I think that's a good thing. Do you have a copy of those minutes, if I can pass them out, there to the, um, council? Posted. Building? Okay. Uh, this is basically a copy of the minutes from October ninth, two thousand and one. And I'll page five, I'll see the boat house is for voting on. Um, and, you know, there's lots of other details, uh, we are getting an appraisal, probably determine fair market value, and that's, uh, so. Don't wanna get into leagues too much, but we're moving forward, that's a good place. Rich, any comments? Sorry, Mayor. Hey, George, uh, thanks.
It launched with this one in socials. Didn't call you a socialist. Um, thank you for letting us talk, that's, that's the main thing. Um, as the representative of boat house owner, or Bill and I have been going about, what do we call these people?
Occupants.
Those peoples, we've been calling them boat house occupants. I think it sounds appropriate that we're occupying the boat houses. Um, makes it sound like a somebody else. Anyway, as a representative of them, our, um, belief, if you will, is, or, we, we disagree with the idea that government ownership of these boat houses will lead to a more fair solution. But, having said that, our assessment of the situation is that that's the only way we can move forward. So we're going with town ownership, and we're trying to now cultivate a, uh, really positive feeling and, uh, decent lease agreement that allows this thing before it gets out of everybody's hair, and everybody can hug and kiss it and, and their makeup, and move forward, go on. So that's where we are. So even though we disagree kind of with where we're going, we're going there anyway. So I just wanna make that clear, and, um, Bill is right, we're having some great conversations, we've talked about a lot of stuff, and, um, I think his assessment that will be done by the September, um, town council meeting is hopefully incorrect. I can't see any big major hurdles in our way, as you never know, negotiations, we're trying, I do that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your effort, sir. Counsel, what do you, any other comments, is that, that right, uh, from that side?
Uh, yeah, that's pretty much it.
If you have any, uh, mutation in the work, we, 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 hopefully, um, Heather, I think at this point, we should, uh, extend our sentences for sixty days, give us, we do it, just because we get, where we wanna go in thirty days, we still gotta put a document together, so, at least nine weeks, folks.
That's right.
And then get that approved by council.
We need to, I need to, there's, uh, from unless you're right.
So that, that I know is not our agenda in the council, so the person I'll do is ask you to put that item into our agenda. Any objections?
Uh, regardless of lease, would it not be easier? Would it be easier to draft a piece of such, or, uh, that is basically a long, long, thirty days?
I think that there are some issues where, uh, councilor Ramos, you know, just where, where if it's a solution, then it's fine as well.
As long as we have something in writing, what I don't wanna do is, is allow the lease to terminate and do a whole, um, we have to have something in writing, in writing, or something. But we could do something, we could extend it for thirty days and continue with thirty days with the notice of thirty day notice to, um, terminate that, or we can do it.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it sounds like we're exactly, you know, but, so I don't wanna be, you know, uh, you know, alleged, or, you know, some sort of like, uh, no offense, but obviously, like, you know.
Correct.
That's, uh, like, you know, four more times, we'll get to the final lease. Um, and then secondly, just, uh, educating, I guess, on the process, what council, what opportunities we'll have for, let's say, the next, uh, September meeting, traction, red, or, if that, I think, uh, what, what's that on a communication? Uh, before we get to that final meeting.
So right now, the form of the lease is a red line, which includes the revisions that were requested by the boat house tenants. So when I get on the phone on Friday with, um, councilmember Martini, this, I'm gonna do a, another red line, and if it's okay with the boat house tenants, I will circulate that draft.
Yes, once you have an agreement about that, but, and, uh, I
Yeah, I haven't circulated anything yet, because I don't, there's not an agreement on the other side.
I, I understood, uh, and, and I guess once we
And I guess once we, if you're happy. To the other red, you know, comments from the other council members, then bring those back to the tenants. And I'm just trying to see where this line of sunshine on everything is.
I could, as long as we don't have an interaction when I send out a red line. Councilmembers should send me back comments, have everything very succinct, I'll keep the comments specific to councilmembers in another draft, I just have to see what looks like.
What I'm just trying to prevent is, you know, we're not on spot negotiation.
So Chris, you're spot on here, but I want to make just a brief comment on how this generally works and why. When council picks someone to send out to negotiate, we generally try to make sure that they bring the best possible product that they think will be passable, right? So in terms of having moved into, having up and down. I agree on something like this, you gave us the opportunity to look at it, certainly get down, opportunity to look at it. That lines are certainly, it remains council's initiative to do what they want with that. But just in terms of. You know, we always try to do our best to make sure we have somebody to come and bring us something that's a really good product and kind of best confine it before we do that up and down, go on it. That way, you know, what happens otherwise is that you send somebody out to negotiate, you know, it's not, they don't have that full weight behind them of the council, so we try to keep that, so that's, it's a little tricky. But we've been on this road a couple of times, we've learned the hard way that you're right, building up here is. Not works, so that would certainly be something that I kind of experience. So let's get all of our feedback and really look at it, get all of your final feedback in council Ramos prior to.
That's. Yeah, I have confidence in the process to be put in place. I'm on, you know. Totally.
You want to make a motion before having one of the extended systems set? Yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion and so we extend the leases on a month-to-month basis with any thirty day. And start hard to terminate.
Go to second council. Any further discussion, council? See, then we can go to councilperson Williams.
Hi.
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 Thank you, council. At this point, we'll move on to our mayor and council liaison reports. I just have a couple of brief items. Saturday, September eleventh at eight thirty, we're going to have an island parade, God willing. We will memorialize that event. Twenty year anniversary. Also, officer German, I will have the new office standing in honor of. And that, it's the last Sunday in August, eight a.m. Chief, I want to speak more about that. Council, any further ratings for liaison reports? Nothing wrong with it. All right, we'll go to staff, Tom. Great job there, by the way, moving on the fly. Robert, Robert had a handwork beginning to go over the ceiling. Just keep him, he's got some prayers, he's got some health issues going on with his mother-in-law. You know, that chief, all the support that everyone's provided so far, so we'll stick you in that. So we can create two, but there it is.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please let me apologize to council and the audience for. The John and Tom show tonight. Our town manager definitely does a better job of this. So from a public works standpoint, we have an RFP coming for approval hopefully for council September meeting. The committee is reviewing the lake management RFP one more time, but hopefully in September, we'll have that brought before council. We also did some roadway improvements last week to Ridgewood, to the Highland and Sixth Avenue, Oakdale between eleventh and twelfth. And then one of the residents on twelfth came by, we were working on Oakdale and asked if there was anything I could do with twelfth because it's got some. Washboarding, we just happened to have some extra materials, so we did go ahead and try to get those washed for even waste some new material down on twelfth where we're out there. And then finally, third avenue from Main Street to Forest was done. Trying to build that intersection up a little bit because it tilts so badly down towards main. I also want to mention, I know councilwoman Martini will be interested in this, the graffiti on the head bridge was beefed over, yay. And then I had the opportunity to speak to Rotary this morning about public works and what we do. And I have the team there introduced down to the Rotary and Amish festivals, a lovely conversation. From down this morning. And then finally, the mobile portable signboard is hopefully coming in September, they're telling me. So we'll have that to be able to go and just sort of site throughout town. Thank you, council, I have this evening.
One thing I did want to mention, so I know you put in that same product as fourth and Butler. Oh, we did it, or maybe not.
I put it.
Where it goes down, we give the washouts there, that intersection.
Sorry.
It's fine.
Okay.
We actually did Butler between second and third.
Right, I saw that, that looks really good. So there, we can put it down there at the bottom.
No.
Well, that's good because I'm like, wait, something happened to this stuff down here for some reason, so I feel better that we did.
No, the only thing about we just second and third on the whole business.
Yeah, all right, so it's going to, yeah, it's going to need it to, that'll be the next part. Also, I believe I was also remiss, I mean, I have to give a date for everybody, but that would be our next. Introduce, we're going to have the vaccine mobile unit, so anyone wants to come down and get a vaccine, that would be available. That'll be a good idea.
It's a farm. It's farm tomorrow, next Monday, so.
On the twenty second, yes, yes.
Yeah, I would make a comment on the protection on this, holding well against the heavy rain, so speaking on the whole day on the area. There's improvements, you know, what, out there, things like that. A really good job on.
Absolutely, that area was a little bit of a tricky grade, and so I would like to thank Mr. Fisk, that he came and spent a lot of time. Out of us there the other day, just to make sure all of that was pitched correctly. It was, it was a tricky situation, we were sending water to different drains on different sides of the road. And so this material is holding up well to do that. Travis was really excited, he was in the field taking videos and texting most of me yesterday through the pouring rain saying, it's working, it's working.
Chief, very good, sir. Yes, man, a little note from Robert says, thank you for accommodating him tonight. Put up a few updates there, so the audit layar completely. We also are working on the IT or the envelope that is a layout. That's seven applications in, so I'll go through those, Robert and myself and, I'm sorry. The block with the seven four, to look at that, to look at that, the storms are out there. And monitor recovery at college, and that was enough, the project for tomorrow. Last thing he added, what you heard was Brady, so I'd rather be here right now. I just envisioned it still all over, but from us, we have, you mentioned August twenty ninth at eight a.m. We have a dedication to when Mary goes post office by Congressman Val Demings office that set that up. So Dan, I said, I was sorry. And then we should email back to Mike, I think for Germans last, I think two weeks ago, I tried to, I'm pretty regular again, once. And talk about we'll be speaking at a patient there, it should be just about an hour, it should be pretty quick. Thanks to the council members who came out and helped out with our DUI school, you guys were excellent. You mean professional. You're very professional. I don't remember, I remember that, I did hear that we need to next year extend the top shelf, the next day is too rough. It was pretty interesting, but hopefully. Great course, really gets individuals educated on that, not just our officers, but our community, comes out and take a look at that. We always invite everybody else to that. Why don't you say we did a presentation, his cameras participated a couple of minutes, started first, we have to wear weekend events, invited to. We finished on the state turns off some work cheaper training, that's all, and a couple of different reviews, I think that's house staying. We've applied for a couple more grants, a real grant that you signed off on, thanks for that. And we applied for another grant, future. Trying to expose some of the succession plan and working down a road for accreditation that comes here. Right now, it's supposed to be for accreditation, and that's all I've got to say. Some of all the people working inside the office. So the plan is hopefully to be in the facility around February.
Yes.
Got a thumbs up there. As soon as our, I was going to say the C's aren't even going to get more, we just want to get activated, make sure all the security features are working. Then apply for accreditation with all the. We have higher map, open, applications open, we've got several people that have put in, we want to know some changes to our old review board process and that. Other than that, one other item, so I know twenty ninth, we have a dedication, just so council members know they're there. I'll be Colorado on August twenty second to twenty eighth, line in that night, so we are twenty ninth for that. And I'm sharing in the field, we can, a week up there typically, yeah, very bad, very low, no service, so it's pleasant. Also, I've got a personal doubt that it's one location that has service, usually later on we have to develop in terms of local also. Appreciate that, so the SRO would be a little for the school day, that's very, that's great. Welcome back to all the students. That's right, today is the first day of schools. So look back all this week, we're just having heavy enforcement out there, just to remind everybody, slow down. Everything seems important on the vice, so. Looking good. Heather, anything additional?
No, I don't have.
Anyone else who are good at the order, councilperson Martin?
Yeah, just a quick reminder, we've got a workshop on twenty fourth for the Lake Down Lake Street part. And also, we had the Columbia German event down. For twenty ninth and also down to that.
Is it, is it open, can we, we have a limit? Because I know that we're sending out invites, that's why I wanted to check for us. They, it's an RSVP. It didn't say a limit on. Let me check with the, with some academic staff, especially there to be one on, I certainly want everyone to be there, but I also don't want to trip over ourselves, so let's, let me just bear with that. The song on the website, I'm going to push it next, so, good idea. So you got a paper? Seven to six. Robert, this is staying on, we're working out a lot.